And we're all set?
Sure.
Okay. I am going to call the Board of Trustees, Village of Cambridge, our meeting of January 10th, 2023, to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Brunig?
Here.
Whitworth?
Here.
Hollenbeck?
Here.
Kumber?
Your.
Phelps?
Here.
McNally?
Here.
And I know Franklin is excused.
Okay, alrighty. Can we stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
The DPs are already standing up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Chrissy, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yeah, the agenda was posted in the upper and lower, lower levels of the Evanson Community Center, Cambridge Post Office, Hometown Bank, Badger Bank, but not the Village website because it's a new year and Chrissy's struggling getting a new tab on there.
Okay.
But it will be.
Alright, okay, so, but everybody else hasn't. Alright. Public comment, is there anybody that would like to speak at this time? We will, we will let Mr. Lund come up if you can introduce yourself.
My name is Dean Lund, I'm a resident of the Village of Cambridge.
Pass, please. Look at that, look at that. Hello, Dean.
Insurance company paper.
Must have sent bills on it, those to Cambridge.
You guys can wear our signs up, that's the last page is.
Okay, well, I want to speak on that, then. Because I've been calling Wendy Brown every single day at the Department of Transportation for these applications to the city owner desk in Cambridge. Both Lee and I are getting harassed by the phone and people coming into the office. I can tell you right now, town of Oakland is illegal. Their, their signs never got a permit, that's why they have them up. And once they come out and do ours the regular way, they're gonna probably take all theirs off because they never even got a permit. So, I've called the lady every day, it is in the middle of tax season, but I've made it a point every day to call her. And now I'm gonna try to get her off because she never returns my calls.
What's her name?
Wendy Brown. And I've even given her phone number out to Lee so he can go out to the community and tell the people.
I'll get your supervisor, Wendy Brown, DOT.
Yep.
A picture's worth a thousand words, that's all I got to comment.
Thank you, Dean.
So, Christiana's okay?
Uh, that I wasn't sure, the gentleman that I was speaking to, or I've been in talks, Tim Holtz, um, I'm sorry, I thought Eric would, no. He was the one that told me about Oakland not having a permit. So, we didn't get into the discussion of Christiana. But we know for a fact that Oakland does not have the right permit for it, and we're doing it the right way, that's why, but I don't still know why it's taking so long.
Well, we just can't drive our four doors down the road yet.
Is there anybody else that would like to have a couple of minutes to speak?
Okay, I'm gonna close this portion of the public comment, move on, approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A second.
Any discussion necessary, any questions?
Nothing.
Where to go? Don't think I had anything.
Okay.
Okay. If that's the case, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry us. Okay, move on to reports. Mr. Lund, I might be calling on you for this next part, see if you're a bit more loquacious. Because I know you were. The thing that I want to report on is about a week ago, I had a visitor, actually two visitors, they're from the Wisconsin State Journal. And they wanted to come out to Cambridge and just find out how we're doing here. There's some reclassification on our rural status. And I took the reporter, Barry Adams, and took him into several storefronts. And we had a chance to visit with the proprietors, and there will be a store running, I just didn't know when. And there were some photos taken of the event. One of the stores that we stopped in was Mr. Lund's business. Mr. Lund, what were, what were your thoughts and comments to?
Um, the one thing that surprised me, I didn't realize we were reclassified to a rural community, and we were classified as a urban.
Yes.
That, that surprised me. Basically, just kind of asked my thoughts on the community, which I, I told him, I says I liked the community because it's friendly, everybody says hi on the street. And then I even kind of said that we see a lot of Norwegian hellos on the street. And what I mean a Norwegian hello is when you're driving your car, you put your finger up to say hi to the other car coming at you, or you tilt your head to say hi. And that's, we have a lot of that in this community. So, people acknowledge other residents of this town. So, that's basically, it was just a nice positive add, or article, I think, and hope is gonna be put in there.
Was there, was there any reason, Mark, for the reclassification?
No.
So, is, we went from rural to urban?
No, we went from urban.
Went from urban to rural.
Which makes a whole lot more sense because I would definitely say we're more rural.
That's what I think.
I believe, was a 5,000 was a cutoff figure for rural?
I think part of that classification may come into play with, like, particularly when they're talking broadband and things like that, what we might be eligible for as a community if we're classified as rural versus urban. Which I think would just benefit Cambridge.
So, I, I know it's gone through the Federal Census Bureau, but that was all that I could get out of it, and I didn't know how we were classified to begin with, how we would ever have been able to achieve urban status, but I, I didn't see a problem with us being called rural, so.
So, hopefully, Mr. Barry will have a nice positive endorsement for our Cambridge here.
Yeah, it'll be nice if we have the various store owners giving a great positive review on, on what the community is doing. Okay, that's the, the item that I wanted to talk about, expect that in the paper when, I don't know. Library board.
Last Tuesday, we invited three candidates for the position of, let's see, what is it?
Librarian?
Librarian.
Library director?
Library director. And two, one?
It was June 20th.
February or something.
In February, okay.
Okay, so, we invited three to, to come in and interview, we got two, and we made a, we, we decided on one, and we offered the personal job, I don't know if she's accepted it yet, but she's gonna be meeting with library board tomorrow night, and I'm gonna walk her through the, the library and stuff like that, gives her a chance to meet us. And there's one other thing, is annual Friends of the Library Annual Meeting in Potluck, 6:30 on January 20th. People like to put that on. And that's about all I have.
Does that add to library?
Probably gonna be in here.
In here?
Yeah.
What time?
6:30.
What day is that?
January 20th.
Okay.
That's about it.
Alright, thanks Ted. Alright, we're gonna move on to Plan Commission, last night's meeting.
Yeah, we met last night, and we had, her name was Lauren Dietz from MSA. She is going to be our MSA representative for our Smart Growth Plan. She gave us some preliminary questions of things that we might want to put on a survey that we're gonna be putting out. Your economic development should have gotten copies of it, if you haven't. Not yet, okay. You will get copies, you all get copies of it. It'll be a living document, so until we get something finalized, then those will be mailed out to the constituents to get some feedback on the plan. And then she gave an outline of what they plan on doing for our Smart Growth Plan, the timetable, timelines, and what to expect going forward. So, it's nice to meet her. That's all that we had on our agenda.
Okay, alright. Thank you. Let's move on. Mr. Lord, Todd, Director of Public Works for the Village of Cambridge, come on up. And maybe you can share with us what's going on here in the village.
Busy. Todd, Public Director of Cambridge. We're gonna, we, we got the lights up for, this is, this is Chris's thing, Chris started that light thing. So, we kept it going because it looks nice out there.
At the ice rink?
Yes, at the ice rink, sorry. We're, we're kind of busy, we're kind of busy, we're preparing for a water main repair on Main Street right now. And next week, we're gonna start doing brush collection again because we have Christmas trees and stuff like that coming up too.
Where on Main Street is the water main?
Uh, right in front of the gymnasium. Where you, where you come out, where you come out at the, at the post office.
Oh, okay.
Be on the east, we'll be shutting down the eastbound lane. What's that?
Dynamic Fitness?
Yes, yes. We'll be closing down the eastbound lane for two to three days, starting the 16th.
Sounds like a big deal.
Well, they said it was okay. Well, I, and I mentioned to them, I said, you know, we can, we can fix this now, or we can wait till it hits 20 degrees below zero, and it fails and we close the whole Main Street, you know? But we found out, we found out by the Chinese restaurant, it hasn't been open for a while, but she was, she was down there and she had shown me that there was seepage in there. Well, at first, we had the plumber, her plumber, look at it to make sure that it wasn't us, and, and then we did a sample, we did a sample and came up with a little bit of chlorine in there, and then we got the leak detector guy out there, and they found the leak.
When is that gonna be repaired?
16th.
16th.
Monday, Monday, the 16th, and then it's gotta be reconcreted, they don't want anything less than concrete back in there. Because if you put cold mix in there, it will rip right back out with a plow.
Is it cold to put in concrete, though?
No, no, they have a, they have a special mix for that. And then they put blankets over top of it for 24 hours.
Higherly.
And, well, they use calcium chloride too, I'm sure, a little bit of that, but then they have to, they'll have to monitor that for the next couple of years, that spot, because it is cold. But it seems like everything will work, everything will work right as long as the blankets are on there and everything. We're just hoping that they get the leak, fix it right there, and that is exactly where the leak is, otherwise they might have to go a little bit farther into it. They seem to be pretty confident that it's right there.
Technology makes it, how to find a leak in pipes that are under the wall?
Isn't that something?
Yes.
Well, they put electrode on one valve box and another one on the other box, and then they, he can calculate how far, how far it goes, how far the noise is from that, that spot. It's pretty interesting.
The roads that are gonna be closed, because you said, what, eastbound is open, westbound will be?
East, eastbound will be, eastbound will be closed. I'm closing, I'm closing Water Street at the, or Spring Street at, at the alleyway. And, but just the north, just to north, not to the south, they can, because they can come in on the south, in case, you know, they come up and say, oh, I think I can make it through there, you know? You know, everybody thinks that they can make it through the road construction.
Okay.
So, and I'm diverting, I'm diverting traffic from Highway 12 and 18 onto 18 with the signs, with the signs out there to make sure that everybody's aware that the road is closed. And then we're gonna give them a second, we're gonna give them a second shot down here in PQ, if it's a semi, to let them know, because they'll be able to look up there and they'll see that the road closed ahead sign, you know? So, that's his last chance.
Is it closed then to Rockdale then?
Uh, no, no, it's, it will be open, it will be open on the southbound side.
So, okay, yep.
What I'm doing is I'm allowing trucks, trucks to have somewhere to park, because they're gonna have dump trucks and trailers and, you know, and we don't wanna, we don't wanna plug everything up. And they'll have to turn right off, off of coming out of the post office. There won't be no left turning off the post office, because that's exactly where the spot is, right across the, right on the other lanes, the eastbound lane.
Three days in convenient.
Three days would be max.
Okay.
What about the customers with the water, they're gonna have to shut off the water, and do the people in that area not have water, or?
I believe that there's only gonna be three houses, three places shut down, that would be the gym, the gym, the house, and then, or the gym, the Chinese restaurant and that house right there.
So, you can reroute the water, I take it?
What's that?
You can reroute water then for the rest of the?
Yeah, we just need to shut down the two, we need to shut down the two valves.
Okay.
For that.
The house, because that's a rental, I mean, she does like Airbnb stuff there, so if she had people staying there, you'd wanna let her know?
Well, they're not gonna shut, they won't shut the water off until they dig all the way down there, and?
Then we'll just be off temporarily?
Right, it's, it's only gonna be off for, you know, the time to take a, they call it a Band-Aid. It's just a Band-Aid that goes around, and so they shut it off, you're looking at probably about two to, two to three hours max that it's off. We're hoping that it's gonna be like that, but, you know, never. Anything else?
Does the, so, the water leaked into Ting Ting Gardens basement, we don't, the village doesn't have any liability?
Seep, no, it's going, it's actually going right in and then right down her drain.
Oh.
Her drain is right in line with it, so we got lucky there, and it's going right into her drain. That's a lucky shot.
Quite a bit of water, or?
No, it's just steady. It's a steady, slow, it's steady and slow, you can take all the water out of there, and then it just slowly seeps up, and then it just kind of slides across the floor real slow.
Yeah, but that equals a lot of water over time.
Right, and it's, apparently, it's been doing it for a while. She didn't mention anything about it up until they were thinking about opening the restaurant again?
Good. Any other questions for Todd?
And the guys are working out fantastic. They, they are definite, definite fits for, for this, so, and they like doing what they're doing too. You got any?
Are there qualifications coming along?
What's that?
Are there qualifications coming along?
Uh, starting, Cody starts class, Cody starts class February. Do them one guy at a time.
Anything else?
Thank you for your hard work, Ted.
Thanks for?
You're welcome.
I voted for him to town over the holidays, and he commented on the beautiful Christmas decorations. So, yeah, he's from Minneapolis and he came down, we went downtown with lights on at night, it was like, how pretty it was.
Seems like hometown USA.
It is, yep.
And then now they're, now those lights are swapped into the, into the ice skating ride.
That's beautiful, yeah. I, I don't like ice skating, but I kind of wanna go ice skating because of the lights a lot.
It's worthwhile.
Exactly.
Alright.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Todd, thank you for coming by. Okay, Village Office Updates, Ms. Brenwood.
I've been collecting taxes, Dane County, I collected $2,712,201.25, which is 66% of the full amount. So, it's been really busy. And then Jefferson as well, I collected $109,612.25 as well. It's 20, 28 payments out of 45 total, so that's a 70% collection. I'm busy with the year-end reporting, W2's, Department of Revenue, the WRS year-end reconciliation. I've had the January settlements for both the counties, Dane has been exported to them already, but Jefferson, I have to handwrite everything, and then I have to hand-deliver it to them by the 15th, so I'm hoping I can kind of squeeze out some time to go there. I had training yesterday in Madison for the new electronic poll books. We do want to order another one, it is very slick. Dean was with me and Sharon, they're both chief, chief election, election inspectors, I can't speak. But then I did speak to Lisa because I had a couple of questions for her, and she did mention that both February and April elections are not as busy as a general election or a presidential election, so she thinks that would be good to have the two right now to train on. And then eventually, but she just said basically, hold off right now. It is really, the way I like it is because there's a drop-down menu, in the last election, I accidentally registered somebody and used their insurance, their GEICO insurance, and that's a no-no. So, this pulls down a list, it doesn't, it just gives you what you can only use, so I thought that was really slick, so there's really no, no more errors. I mean, preparing documents to provide to auditors, they also want it by January 15th, following up with the DOT regarding the ATV, UTV signs on a daily basis. I'm also helping with permitting process for the upcoming roadwork. I've assisted Lieutenant Lordson with address changes in his CAD software with vineyards, with the Ken Seth Way changing to Chardonnay, and then the Vineyard Crossing to Merlot, it's not in his software yet, so that's an issue, but I've reached out to 911 and got the tech guy, and he should be seeing it here shortly. I'm also working with the building inspector with the new addresses that are gonna be going in the new subdivisions. I wanna do it right the first time so we're not having to re-number anything again. And I've been checking Lisa's emails frequently and pulling the election absentee requests, and as also other emails as I see that need to be taken care of.
Any questions for Chrissy? Sounds like you're keeping yourself busy.
Very.
Okay. Okay, alright, thank you, Chrissy. Alright, let's move on, item seven here, bills, back to you, Chrissy.
Yep, the first round of bills were $11,703.82, and the second round was $9,279.54, for a grand total of $20,983.36. I did mention, now that I'm taking over the AP, I did come across a frontier bill, which kind of seemed a little, just weird to me because it's coded as a fax, and we don't have faxes, we don't have one at our office, and I don't believe the share, or the, the police don't have one in theirs, and I, I know DBW doesn't, and we pay for the faxes through our e-fax, and we pay for that through the Visa, so I, it's about a $300 bill. So, I have coded it right now just to get it in, but I am gonna investigate that more because the phone numbers that are listed on it ring to nothing, and if it was a fax, it would give you that screechy noise, so I'm just trying to.
So, we've been paying for this, what, monthly?
Yeah.
$300 possibly for a fax that we don't even really have.
Right.
Okay, let us know on that one. Okay.
And then I did include the payroll, I sent an email late today, I apologize for the lateness, but, an email for the payrolls that were processed both in December and this, the ones in January, as well as all the check runs that have been done while we were signing.
Alright. Okay, so the total is $20,983.36. Anybody care to?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in September.
Take a second.
Okay, discussion? Any questions? Okay, no questions. Alright, we have a motion, a second, how about we do roll call on this one?
Okay. Whitworth?
Yes.
Hollenbeck?
Yep.
Brunig?
Yes.
Kumber?
Yes.
Phelps?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Okay, let's get into some business. Item 8A, Discussion on Possible Action Regarding the Kashkhanan Trail School. This one sounds like you, Chrissy. Or Lisa, but she's not here.
Um.
Looks like there was an email sent?
Yeah.
To Lisa? From the school district there.
Looks like Kashkhanan Schools wants to add more recycling bins throughout the town. Have they reached out to you, Todd? About any of this?
Westside Park, Veterans Park, Main Street, and the libraries, what they're looking at, targeting, it's the seventh and eighth grade students from the Kashkhanan Trail Schools.
Do you want to put up recycled things, or?
Recycling bins.
So, they want us to?
They want to.
They want to.
I, I don't have a problem with that. Do they want us, do they want us to empty them, or are they gonna empty them?
It's their project.
Well, well, they, they want, we want to help educate the community about sustainability by recycling, even if we're using. They want to put more recycling bins in the Village of Cambridge. The idea is the next, if?
Take one and pass it down.
Recycling bins and good science and help educate.
I haven't heard you.
And make choices, and that, that they're open in that Westside Park, Veterans Main Street, and the library, and I'm just wondering what that steps are. I think the next step would be go to Public Works, or?
That would probably make more sense.
I think the next step would be go to Public Works and get approvals.
It could come straight here.
Or it could come, or they could come straight here. But I don't think they would be updating them, I don't know. See, those are the questions we need to ask.
Yeah, I would.
No, I think how I'd rather say one of the three or seven have them placed for the recycle projects that they have going on, I think we'll do more information.
Yeah, I would recommend that maybe they come in and brief the Public Works Department, and then Public Works asks those pertinent questions that you just brought up, Paula, and then they can come back to the board.
So, have them talk to Todd about what their plans are, and then, you know, we can bring it up as a future item.
Agenda item.
Okay.
Are we gonna have them purchase the cans, or are we?
That's what they, that letter indicated that they were going to purchase the cans.
Okay, and then we need recycled containers to, to sell out for recycled trash to pick up on?
So, don't know, that's what will happen.
Yeah, you, you can ask those pertinent questions in Public Works.
We'll have them talk to you, and then you can.
Okay, thank you.
Chrissy, can you forward this letter to, to Todd?
Yes.
Or Todd, if you look in the, in this week's packet, there's the letters that we got from the county. And you'll note as much as we know.
I believe they, I believe they were supposed to be here tonight, is what I found on the counter, so I guess it just didn't get back to them to be here tonight. But we can have them come to the next.
They can come, yeah.
Yeah.
I, when you're talking to them, Todd, I only had a question with regard to Main Street, and one was snow plowing, I don't know if they're gonna take these cans down in the wintertime, but sometimes you're plowing the Main Street, Westside Park and?
Veterans Park and the library, there's plenty of room, but, snow plowing, and then in the summertime, I worry about recycling on Main Street, only because at the end of summer, you get those wasps, and they have a tendency to hang around sugar-infested areas, and that could be a problem if those cans aren't being always emptied. So, that's just something when you're talking with, with the folks, if you could keep that in mind. That's it? Looks like we're gonna, we're gonna delegate this one to Todd, so nothing else for us to do, let us know. Okay. Let's move on, Item B, Discussion on Possible Action Regarding the Bids for Well Number Three, Recommendation from the Water and Sewer Committee.
Alright, we made a recommendation for, to accept Mid-City for the Well Number Three project in the amount of $4,842,000. That motion carried on a four to zero vote. So, I know we have a representative from MSA up here.
In case we need it.
If you want to discuss the, the differences between the bids that came in, but that's what we, that's what we accepted.
Yeah, I'm cheering with MSA for special services, um, no, no, some of the Water and Sewer Committee have seen, been seeing a lot of me lately. We took bids on December 8th for the water treatment facilities at Well Three. I was at the December Sewer and Water Committee meeting to discuss those bids. We did receive three bids, as indicated, a low bid was from Mid-City Corporation in Butler, Wisconsin, amount of $4,842,000. Second low bid was roughly $3. low bid was roughly 3% above that. The third, the third bid was roughly 9% above that. So the three bids were fairly well tight together. The low bid was pretty much dead on with our construction cost estimate that we developed last May. So we're happy about that. It would have been nice if it'd come in lower. But recently in bids, we've been surprised in some bad ways. So we were glad to see it come in at our estimate. Mid-City Corporation has not worked on an MSA project before. So we did request a statement of qualifications and references, reviewed that in detail. I discussed that with the committee at the December meeting. They did get quite glowing references. They haven't done a lot of this type of work. Mid-City was, well, they were incorporated in 1965. So they've been around for a long time. They're originally a plumbing and HVAC company. And they evolved into a large sewer and water main underground contractor. Their revenue, revenues in the last two years have been like 30 million and 35 million. They have roughly, I think, 70 employees, something like that. Seemed like they have a lot of stability. It's, I guess you'd call it a family owned firm. The president and I believe the chief, chief financial officer have both been there for 20 or 30 years. One of their foremen, same last name, he's been there like 42 years. So as I say, it seemed to have a lot of stability. And got really glowing references. They are doing one project in particular for the city of Milwaukee on a water, a large water booster station. It's about an $8 million project. They're not very far into the construction. But this engineer for Milwaukee Water Utility was very, very enthusiastic about them. So on the strength of the fact that they're a low bid, also in their bid, they did list very reputable subcontractors, good suppliers and materials for the items that we required that information in the bid. As a subcontractor there, they've included LW Allen for electrical controls. And LW Allen has done all the work here in the city for electrical controls in your water system in the past. So I think that's a good thing. For construction of the building itself, they're going to utilize a firm called Hunsinger Construction from Brookfield. Well, I also don't know, but I did look briefly at their website and they appear to be a very large firm, certainly capable of constructing that building. They also have offices out in Denver, Colorado. But so anyway, based on the fact that they're a low bid, they, the items in their bid were, you know, reputable subs, good materials. And on the strength of the references, we recommended, are recommending award to Mid-City Corporation.
All right. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to accept the bid from Mid-City for the well number three project in the amount of $4,842,000.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion at the committee, at the Water and Sewer Committee? Are there any concerns anybody raised?
Insurance was brought up. And they're properly insured. The variances between the three bids, familiarity was brought up. But they checked out, checked all the, you know, although they were the lowest bid. We asked for the same explanation on the other two bids and just to do our due diligence to see, just because it's the lowest bid doesn't mean it's the best. So, but we, we were a consensus vote on that this was...
I just got one quick question. And this project is bonded, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
They'll have performance and payment bonds. Equal, equal to 100% of the bid price.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Okay. Well, this is certainly money. Four times our annual budget. So, gonna ask for a roll call on this one.
Trustee Phelps?
Yes.
Trustee Kumbir?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Trustee Whitwer?
Yes.
Trustee Brunig?
Yes.
President McNally?
Yes. All right. Okay, that takes care of, we may have a little bit more yet.
We've got a couple more items.
Okay. Item C here, new business. Discussion on possible action regarding amendment number two to the owner and engineer agreement for well three and a recommendation from Water and Sewer. Chris?
So we discussed this as well. And we wanted to recommend to the village board amendment number two, the owner engineer agreement in the amount not to exceed $236,400. This was also a unanimous decision that was made by Water and Sewer. And Dan, if you could go into a little bit more detail for the board, appreciate it.
Yeah, sure. So currently MSA is under contract for design and bidding assistance services. And this amendment is for the construction related services. So all the construction administration as well as the onsite construction observation. And what we do needs to put together the scope and fee is we list all the tasks in a spreadsheet. Under each task, we identify who we think is going to be working on the project. Then we identify or estimate how many hours each individual is going to work on that task. And then based on those hours and their standard charge out rate, we develop a cost for each person, add up all those costs. There are also miscellaneous reimbursable expenses, mileage and copies, postage and so forth that we build in there. And so that all goes into that spreadsheet. And that's how we develop the scope and the fee that was provided. We're proposing to do the construction administration services on a lump sum basis and the construction observation services on a time and materials basis. The reason for that is construction administration scope is pretty well defined. But construction observation may vary depending on the contractor and what things are encountered out in the field. So it seems a fairist to both parties to do that on a, on a time and materials basis. You know, there could conceivably, we're estimating hours for the construction observation. We came up with 711 hours for the whole project. So, you know, there's potential that, you know, we wouldn't need to be out there as often as we might have assumed. And so there would be some cost savings.
Do a motion.
I'll make a motion right away. Then we can have a little discussion.
Okay, you're gonna make a motion. You have a second.
I second.
Wait, you've made a motion for what?
Just a...
Yeah, you just said I'll make a motion. But to approve or not?
I'm just making up. Oh. I'll make a motion to accept MSA's amendment number two to the owner and engineer agreement for well number three. And the committee also made that, is making this recommendation, recommendation to the board in the amount of $236,400.
Chris?
I'll second.
Okay. Now we have questions.
The question I have is on this contract with this firm out of Butler. Are they, do they have a deadline? And if they go past that deadline, do they incur a fee from...
Yeah, there are, there's a substantial completion date identified in which by that date, all the equipment has to be operational. And then there's a final completion date, which is all the closeout documentation and everything has to be completed. And there are liquidated damages identified for each of those completion dates.
Okay. Paula?
Dan, I just have one question. Seeing this is going to be a certified payroll project.
Yes.
Are you guys going to oversee that?
Yeah, and that's actually part of the next agenda item, the loan, loan administration portion.
Paula?
For the, my concern, the 711 hours, is there something in here where you'll be tracking that on a regular basis? And if you're getting to within, you know, if you've expended 90% of those hours and you don't think that's going to be enough, we get some sort of notification. How does that work?
Well, we...
A little of it would be great.
Yeah, yeah.
How, how do we get the notice that you might be going over?
We definitely have to let you know and get a contract amendment. For one thing, I guess this project is administered, is anticipated to be funded by the DNR Safe Drinking Water Loan Program. If we go over our contract amount, DNR won't reimburse those costs. So basically, we don't get paid. So that's our incentive to, to make sure that. If it looks like, you know, it's going to go over, we have to explain why and get a contract amendment.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the contract that we have with MSA in the amount of $236,000 for their services?
Did we have our legal teams look at these at all? Or do we not do that? Have legal review either one of these two contracts?
I, I don't know if she has.
Lee, I can say that your attorney did review the original contract. I don't know that they've looked at the amendment. The amendment thankfully is much shorter than the original contract. But I don't know if your attorney has looked at the amendment.
So as soon as this gets, this contract gets signed by the village, you're going to let the low bidder know that they can start...
Yeah, the next things that will happen, now that you've awarded the construction contract, they'll have to provide the bonds that you asked about, the performance payment bonds. They'll have to provide certificate of insurance. Then we'll execute the actual contract. Both parties will sign. And then we'll have a pre-construction meeting.
Okay.
I mean, we have to call for, like, we have to work with Ellers. Don't we have to go out for bond for all of this? Because we don't have the money for it.
We've been working with them.
Yep.
Right. So we have to do that piece too.
Right. Ellers is working on putting in their recommendations for interim financing. The final funding for the project, again, is anticipated to be through the DNR Safe Drinking Water Loan Program. It's a 20-year loan.
And that takes a little long.
Right, that, that loan won't close until probably around the end of the year. So that's why there's interim financing required. The good news is the interim, the interest expense for the interim financing is a loan eligible cost too.
Okay, any other questions regarding the contract here with MSA in the amount of $236,000? Roll, oh, I'm sorry.
$236,400.
Okay, $236,400. Roll call, please.
Trustee Kumbir?
Yes.
Trustee Phelps?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Trustee Whitwer?
Yes.
Trustee Brunig?
Yes.
President McNally?
Yes. Okay, and then there's one more item in here. And that is discussion on possible action regarding professional services agreement with MSA for the application and oversight of the safe drinking water loan program. Recommendation from Water and Sewer.
Water and Sewer recommended this unanimously as well. This agreement would have the MSA folks handling the SDW Safe Drinking Water application, the amount of $13,500. The administration portion of that is $12,700. And the labor standards compliance administration to that is $12,500, which equals $38,700 to have MSA comply with the oversight of the safe drinking water loan application. So for discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the professional service agreement with MSA for oversight of the safe drinking water loan application and administration at an amount not to exceed $38,700.
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion.
I'm, I'm assuming that if we want to apply for the safe drinking water loan, it's best to have a professional help us do that. And that's what we're paying for.
Unless you want to do it, Paula.
I'm just saying why, why we're doing it. Because that's...
Oh, absolutely.
The best recommended practice would be to have professionals help us apply for that.
That, and also making sure that all the labor on this project is filed properly with the...
Yeah, to comply with Davis Bacon. There's also, the funding program requires the use of American iron and steel. So documenting that as part of the administration as well.
And I'm assuming this is something that MSA does regularly. So it's not...
Oh, yes. Yeah. No, this was put together by our, we have a funding group, a team. That's all they do. I should know how many of these they do per year. But there's between the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program for water, portable water. And then there's a sister program, Clean Water Fund for Wastewater. I want to say we probably do a dozen of these a year at least. So...
Okay, any other questions? All right, we have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Trustee Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Trustee Kumbir?
Yes.
Trustee Phelps?
Yes.
Trustee Whitwer?
Yes.
Trustee Brunig?
Yes.
President McNally?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, moving on. Item E, discussion on possible action regarding resolution 2023-01 establishing licenses, miscellaneous permits and administrative fee schedule.
I don't believe any, any fees have changed. Let me double check the banner.
Yep. The banner was $100 to put up, $100 to put down. That fee's been raised to 1.5. That is truly a pass. It costs $125 to put up and $125 to put down. So that's the item that has changed.
Okay. Thank you. I do remember that.
Okay. Anybody care to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to accept, to accept resolution 2023-01 establishing licenses, miscellaneous permits and administrative fee schedule.
Okay, second. All right, for discussion.
This is usually the portion of the year where we discuss the president's pay, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Yeah.
I think we do that during audit finance. We'll have to make sure we look at that next year.
Yeah, definitely.
I'll make sure.
All right.
Thank you, Chrissy.
You're welcome.
Yeah, there's been a heck of a jump, let me tell you. Okay, we have this proposed schedule. We have a motion in a second. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carries. All right. And gonna move to F, discussion on possible action regarding the purchase of a new laptop. And it's going to be partially paid through the Wisconsin Election Commission Security Grant. Chrissy?
We have a quote from Computer Magic. This is actually going to be paid partially through the Wisconsin Election Safety Grant that they're offering. And we figured between Lisa and myself that this would be good to have being down here. We could either, you know, access emails or look up people's water bills or, I mean, make it a little bit of a smoother process. Even, you know, if somebody's busy with the registration, somebody else can be doing registration on that laptop. That's pretty much what it would be designed for. And I think it would be very helpful.
And, and the other thing is too, I think, wasn't there during the November election, wasn't there like a website or something that, that we were all hooked up into in case there were incidents that occurred?
You're correct. It's a...
And so had that laptop down here?
Yes.
So that we could very quickly get onto that website and register it?
Yes.
That's why that whole safety, election safety thing, we figured that'd be a good use for that.
Yeah, it's basically an open Zoom meeting all day for any...
Yeah, that's it. An open Zoom. So we could participate in that and...
And then they have updates throughout the day.
Yep.
How much does the grant cover of this?
I want to say 500. But I'm not positive. I can double check.
What's the total cost of the computer?
$600.
Oh, $600. The total cost is $1349, $1349.
Almost half of that laptop.
Yeah.
And the staff needs a new laptop. We need a new laptop upstairs anyway. So...
I did get that one repaired, the one that we have right now. It just needed a new battery, but...
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion.
All right. Okay.
I'll second.
Okay.
Nobody here.
What's the motion?
Motion is to use that grant money to buy a new computer for the Commission Security Grant, so they can have it.
The motion will be to purchase a new computer for one thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars and then subtract the grant money of six hundred dollars from that?
Yes.
What you got?
Yep.
Who is the second? Okay, Ted, okay.
And just another thought, this is going through Computer Magic, so it will have all the firewall and all the security that we have upstairs.
All right.
Good.
Sounds good, how about we vote on it? Roll call.
Well, I've never had so many roll calls. Let's start with, uh, Trustee Brunig.
Yes.
Trustee Whitworth.
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Trustee Kumbir.
Yes.
Trustee Phelps.
Yes.
President McNally.
Yes. All right, thank you. Moving to item G, new business, discussion on possible action regarding the reduction in the letter of credit for the Scott Farms subdivision. Chrissy?
Well, that's the handout I gave you earlier that came from Jody Young. It was in an email, and then that was attached to it.
So, the revised estimate would be to lower it by the seventy-eight thousand six hundred dollars?
Yes.
And, and I guess I wasn't following because, okay, so here's my thing. It says more topsoil is gonna be needed, as well as a twenty percent contingency, so why would the, the estimate be going down?
I don't know what the total price was that we were holding.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Well, I do know, well, I don't know.
Is it an RV seed out there? Could worry for asking it, is that great?
That I don't know.
All right, I'm gonna maybe suggest, I know we don't like to do this, but how about we table this one?
Okay.
Till the next meeting, and we'll get a little bit more information.
Is there any urgency with Scott Farms for us doing this in, at this meeting?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, then I say let's-
We can wait till the twenty-fourth.
Let's just get a clarification.
Yeah.
If, if Joe could just like in a real nice two seconds say-
Yeah.
Here's what we're asking for this reason.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
I was under the impression he was gonna be here tonight, so, my apology.
Yeah, and it's okay. Sometimes the schedules change and things happen, so that's all.
All right, we'll table this one.
Well, the reason for this extra topsoil and stuff like that is when a line of energy or the subcontractor that did all the burying of electrical lines, they kinda made a mess. And that's what this extra topsoil and seeding and everything is for, because when the contractor, when the contractor left the site, everything was the way it was supposed to be. But then they came in and buried the electrical lines and put the transformers in and all that other stuff.
So, this all has to do with setting a le- le- letter of credit amount? And I don't know what the implication of that letter of credit amount. And it, and it's higher than what he was recommending in December. He was recommending fifty-eight thousand. In January, he's recommending seventy-eight thousand. So, understanding, I think, number one, I, I would ask a question, what the letter of credit is for? Just a clarification for my purposes, and then, and then understanding why that is.
And that's me asking the question, too, why it's going from there to there.
Yeah, yeah, so.
All right, Chrissy, you know what you're gonna have to do to follow up on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes care of new business. Let's go into unfinished business. Fire Commission update. There was a meeting last night, and we got two materials, and it was, essentially, it was a special meeting. We, we tried, we were, we took a big chunk of cash out of the Bank of Deerfield and wanted to deposit it here in Cambridge. That is, it's, it's gone into a savings account. And so, I, I made sure that I gave to you what I gave to the bank today to establish the account. That was the only reason we got together, because there was money there, and we needed to clean that out.
And the dollars that were there, were those fire, for the fire department side, or for the?
EMS.
The ES side?
Nope, this was the commission's savings account.
How much money?
Total was two hundred and sixty-five. There was two hundred thousand that was withdrawn. That's for emergency funds, so if anything-
Is that an emergency fund that you guys can't touch unless you get approval from the?
Yeah.
That'd be the one.
So, we got a big chunk of it. There's a small amount there, but it's tied in with a CD. So, that money will be withdrawn and closed the account out, I estimate, in February.
And that emergency fund that probably shouldn't be added to unless we all agree that it gets added to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, that's what we did, and the paperwork is in front of you, and the signatures of the five commission members, and we needed to give that to the bank. So, it is now deposited over at Badger Bank, so, thank you very much.
Was there any discussion about the leadership within the fire and EMS, or anything like that?
No, there has been nothing. As far as, I thought there would be a meeting in the month of January, and there's, there's nothing.
No, no discussion about responding to the letter that we sent? Can you request that that get put on as an agenda item for the next meeting?
I can, you know, I mean, I can ask.
Have you not been, uh, in the loop about the meeting next Monday? Just not.
No.
I, we, we have a meeting lined up between the leadership of the fire department and what we were told was going to be yourself, Mark Cook, and the commission lawyer.
I'm sorry, you're Tom Fredericks, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, this is next Monday?
Next Monday at four thirty.
All right.
At the fire station.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
I guess your presence is requested.
Yeah, I guess, oh.
Probably.
Four thirty.
I don't know what's going on with the fire, with the EMS, with the fire and EMS commission. I, I mean, the more I hear about this stuff-
It's like you're a wild west.
The more I have lack of complete confidence in that entire commission. Because it, it seems like you guys have no idea what's going on and what you're doing. And I'm not blaming you, Mark, I, I just have concerns about that commission as a whole. And I don't see it getting any better, because they, they continually ignored everything we've asked for. When is that going to change, and when does the Village of Cambridge get some recourse? And what recourse do we have? To make them more accountable to the municipalities they're serving?
Okay. All right, okay.
Mr. Frederick, was this meeting brought about by the leadership of fire and EMS, or was it, was it?
We've been trying to get some, uh, some discourse between us and the commission for quite some time, since, since these IGA changes were presented.
Okay.
Without any consultation with us, and that was at the November tenth commission meeting. We, we've tried to have, and, and up until that point, we had fairly fluid discourse with the commission through the commission president, Mark Cook. The, what happened, what transpired at that November tenth meeting was, was, was all a surprise to us. There had been no discussion with us about the things that were presented at that meeting. In fact, myself and Chief Johnson had met with Mark Cook on November first, and were told that, um, we were, we were told straight up that, that some of our concern, based on our concerns that the two primary things that, that happened affecting us at that November tenth meeting were not gonna happen. That's what we were told on the first.
What I was wondering, though, is, is this, is this meeting that's coming up, has it been, has it been properly posted? Is there an agenda? Is there, is there any kind of formalities with this?
It's not a commission meeting, it's, it, it doesn't, it's not, uh, it, it's, it's just a meeting between the leadership of the fire department and what we were told was gonna be Mark Cook, Mark McNally, and the lawyer.
Okay.
It's not a, it's not a-
Doesn't need to be a posted meeting.
How many people are on the commission, bud?
We've been trying to have some discourse with, with the commission since that November tenth meeting, and, uh, we've been kinda turned away at every, uh, we haven't had, emails that have been sent to Mark Cook haven't been applied to, or he hasn't provided us. We, we asked him, you know, right away after that meeting, because we have a copy of the proposed changes to the IGA. We were provided that at the meeting, and he hasn't, he still hasn't sent that. We've gotten it from other sources, but, um, we're, we're just trying to sit down with the representatives of the commission and perhaps have some discourse about where this is going.
And this meeting, is that the fire station?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll be checking in and out. All right. So, that's my update on the fire commission.
Oh, this is a good one, too.
Okay, moving on. B, unfinished business, update from the joint Oakland-Cambridge Subcommittee Discussion on Possible Action Regarding Blue Jay Way. We had ourselves a rocking meeting there.
No, nothing happened.
Yeah.
Absolutely nothing happened.
Nothing happened, nothing changed.
Nope.
You can read about it in the paper.
Yeah.
I guess I got a question, why, this has been going on ever since I've been on the board, and that's been a few years already, you know? And Paula was on the board previously, and nothing ever happens, Mark. So, when is Cambridge gonna step up and take over ownership of Blue Jay Way, so?
We're not going to, Ted.
Hold on, hold on. So, last night at the plan commission, we discussed the topic of our smart growth plan, how we have an intergovernmental agreement, and there are certain roads that were supposed to be brought into the village and some, so, part of that planning is to see what it would take to annex those particular roads properly, you know, get the, the houses and everything that goes with it. And, and to have it in the plan, so that it isn't just this, yeah, we have this agreement that says that we want to do this, or that we have to do this, but if we plan for it, then, or at least get constituents' viewpoint of it, maybe we have a better standing with actually negotiating something legitimate, that we have it in our plan, we're taking steps, again, as usual, we're taking steps to, to move forward, to at least, we're doing the right thing. So, that did come up at our, that was, that's one step in that direction. Okay. That came up at the plan commission last night. I didn't think of it until this time.
I mean, it would be absolutely ridiculous for Cambridge to annex that road in its current condition. If they wanna improve the road and get it up to a, to a drivable, reasonable, great standard, so that the road can last for a number of years without any major improvement, at that point, then I think we could consider annexing it. But we cannot annex a road that is in such a state of disrepair when Cambridge doesn't have the money to take care of the roads that we already own.
That's true.
And the only other thing I would say is, I, I don't think we do anything right now. I would, I would urge that we just kinda push this one to the back burner and leave it alone. There will be an election in April, and maybe there'll be some new people coming on their board that might be thinking a little different. I don't know. But I, I know how, what the attitude of some of the folks that are there, and-
I think we just stand by what we've always agreed to. We will pay for half.
Of a mill and overlay.
Of a mill and overlay. We agreed to that? I don't think anyone on this board wouldn't agree to, continue to agree to that.
And maybe repair some of the sub-bays that's really bad, and then a mill and overlay is fine.
Well, for this year, who knows? We may just be doing more repairs and maintenance on it. I don't know, but it's, uh, we didn't get very far. I don't think we do anything until after the election, and the committee is still there. And Chris, you and I will probably be continuing on with them later, so.
Yeah, I think some of the, some of the silver lining of, of having that meeting is, you know, we, we had the discussion in front of the superintendent, so now the school knows where the, the banter is back and forth between Oakland and ourselves. And, you know, one of the things that you brought up, Eric, is you gotta take into consideration the, the common denominator here is the homeowners, too. And they, they have a say on whether or not they wanna be annexed or not, whether Oakland and I, or Oakland and Cambridge are talking about it or not. The homeowners have the, have the say, so that has to be vetted out as well. But I see your point, which is, put it in our plan, and that's a conversation piece that we can have on that second phase of the discussion with Oakland. After the first phase is approved, and we have the mill and overlay and the fifty-fifty split, that's, that's where we want it to go. First initial phase of the discussion, let's get some actionable items in there. Then the second phase, you know, you bring up a great point, put it in our smart growth plan. So, plan for it.
And one thing that needs, maybe is forgotten all the time, is stormwater runoff in that area is terrible.
All right, that was the discussion on that. Moving on, Cambridge Foundation Request, ten A.
This is a nice letter.
Yes.
We, we, you know, staff put together good letters, go to the foundation, requesting the three items that we had asked for.
Yes.
It's been signed. I, I even brought a copy down to Mr. Rumpf and dropped it off.
So did Lieutenant Lawrenceon.
He did as well? Okay. Um, so, Mr. Rumpf's got several requests, yeah. Okay, 'cause he had a copy when I was there, he was pulling it out. Yeah. Okay, uh, questions, referrals to staff, future agenda items, Safer Communities Update, February twenty-eighth. We wanna talk about Highway one thirty-four, Lagoon Road intersection on the twenty-fourth. Is there anything else that?
Is, is Joe Young part of that twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Okay, so he'll be, he'll be at the next meeting for that one, so then he can talk to us about that line of credit.
Yes. Yep.
All right. Anybody else have anything that they wanna throw on the agenda?
No, I just have a question for Todd about the coverage pickup in our area of his home on Monday, and the big trash receptacle that we have that you guys put out for collecting poop from, whatever, it was totally missed by the guy who came, I just drove right by it, like it wasn't even there on Monday.
I don't, do they pick-
On the side street.
Do they pick that up?
Where's that Myrtle Way or whatever?
Well, well-
What receptacle that you had us put out there?
Yeah.
I don't, I, you guys were gonna work on that. We didn't, we just put it out there because you asked for that.
Right.
You said that they were picking up.
Our understanding was that they were gonna pick it up.
The only, the only one that we're technically responsible for is the one that's sitting out on, uh, sitting out towards the apartments over there.
Right.
Right, and they don't, no.
And if they don't, if they don't pick it up, that one that you said that you'd take here of?
Is it a cart?
Yeah.
Okay, then the-
It's just like the residential ones.
Okay, then the, we'll, we'll call them.
Yeah.
Everybody's, what, what's supposed to be on?
Yeah, it was right there on the truck.
Yeah, that, that, we'll call them and, and let them know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't, I don't know if this is a every other week pickup, or? I just had it at home.
No, it's, it's one week.
Right. I just had it at home on Monday, it was totally missed. Yeah, we always mention that.
But, yeah, it's the office.
It's right there at the road, the other one, because otherwise I'd go right by. They're not gonna come out and grab it, pull it. And if they can grab it, if they can grab it with a machine, they'll grab it, otherwise they won't grab it. There's been one time where I didn't get it close enough, and they wouldn't grab it, so I got it a little bit farther, and then I grabbed it.
Okay.
And I understand, so if it's six feet, they should be able to grab it.
Okay, yeah.
If you ever see that again, just call down to the office, and they'll address it.
Just an FYI.
All right. All right.
I did have one item, where are we with understanding the payment for the equalized value of the fire and EMS?
That is on my to-do list. And I'm going to reach out to, hopefully, the EMS, because I think they, or the fire department, because they would be the ones to help me with the boundaries, because I reached out to Fort, and then they told me where they end, and so then, I want to just take a guesstimate, so I was hoping I could work with the fire department or EMS, to let, they can tell me where, like, or show me their map.
So then we can, and then
And then I could figure out how they
We've got a way to figure out the cost of the homes, of the areas they'll cover.
Yes, exactly.
We will need to do the same thing for the town of Lake, township of Lake Mills?
Right.
Because I believe we only cover a portion of them as well.
We do, yeah, they're smaller.
Whatever recommendation we're having of that, we want to
Do that was
Equal those partial townships equally?
Sure, yep.
All right.
Is there anything else here for questions, referrals?
You have lots on your, but the website, people can't get to the stuff on the website, so we're gonna
Okay, what I want everybody to do is homework, for the next two weeks, you guys get on there, you guys go to the website.
Type in.
Type in ci.cambridge.wi, no, just dot wi.us. Type that in, and just in Google, and then, then go into, because they probably won't see us, but then go into your taskbar and type it in, tell your friends, tell whoever, the more people traffic that can get there, and then it to be seen, is going to help us. Right now, we don't have enough foot traffic to go to make it visible by Google.
Jesus, okay.
So once again, we want everyone in the village, multiple times
Yes, has to
Every day, go in and hit ci.cambridge.wi.us.
Yes.
It does take a couple of seconds
Yes.
For the site to load, so be patient, it isn't instantaneous.
Right.
It's a slow-loading site, but then the site will come up.
Okay, all right.
But then the other second part of that
If you got a slow computer, it really takes a long time.
Was that, the Google account that is associated with that was set up by Mrs. Gekner, who did not give me a password to the Google account, so to retrieve a password from Google is insane, you type in the email, which I do, and then it says in six hours, we're going to send you a reset to your email, I can't get in the email, so how can I get my reset password if I can't get in the email?
Can't we ask Mark, this guy's slow, I mean
She doesn't remember, I have asked.
She didn't write it down somewhere?
The stuff that's written down is my writing, and I always write it inside the folder, I say username, password, and those don't work.
Well, can't we get a new password?
It's the one that's affiliated to that, to the website.
All right, okay.
I'm working on it.
Sounds like you're working on it.
I had it
Okay.
I know you did, that's why you covered your face, you saw the tagger's coming.
All right, gonna wrap it up here, upcoming meetings, we've got the library board tomorrow night, January sixteenth, we've got economic development, seventeenth, water and sewer, and the twenty-fourth, we'll have another village board meeting. All right? Anybody else want to help me close out the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Paula.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None.